April 23rd, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh-uh. Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Breeney.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Kumbier.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay. I think everybody is accounted for. I think we'll be here tonight. All right. Can we stand in the range of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa or Barb, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly posted?
It has been posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, the Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
Okay. All right. We'll move on. Public appearances. Safe Communities. If you could come up to the table and introduce yourself and speak into the microphone if you have things you want to hand out.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Oh, extra. Great. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Lee. I'm Director of Safe Communities, which is an injury prevention coalition that's based in Dane County. And I wanted to really just come and thank you for your partnership over the years and to just sort of update you on some things that have happened. You may know us as the Slow Down Yard Sign People, the Med Drop People. We partner on a number of those things with your police department. And with the senior center, we offer the Stepping On Falls Prevention Programs. So I wanted to point out our 20 year, so this is our 20-year anniversary. And so I wanted to sort of bring you up to speed on some accomplishments that we've achieved together because really, none of this would be able to happen without the partnerships that we have with local municipalities and with the law enforcement senior centers, EMS, fire, and basically you all as leaders of your community. So we formed 20 years ago after the county public health department found that there was a lot of injury prevention and safety work happening in Dane County, but very little collaboration. So we're really about building partnerships and not working in silos. And we're also about looking at the data. So we know that the top causes of injury, death, and hospitalization and emergency room visits are now our opioid overdose epidemic, which unfortunately, a lot of us have had experience with. And I can tell you a little bit about some of the things we're doing there. Suicide is another major issue in Dane County. Elder falls and traffic crashes. And so we have programs that we put together that are based on research and evidence. And we don't have a lot of staff. Really, our goal is to bring together people who are already doing work in the community and joining those forces. So for example, the Stepping On program for Elder Falls is a partnership with all the healthcare organizations. And they provide pharmacists and nurses and OTs and PTs. And then they're hosted by senior centers or libraries so that we're really mobilizing all the people in the community to work on it instead of, you know, us just coming in with another program and spending more money. So that's really the philosophy. It's based on a world health organization model where you look at the top causes of injury in your community. So I actually have colleagues in Nebraska who are working on preventing rattlesnake bites. You know, it just kind of depends on what your issues are. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the programs that we're engaged in. So I mentioned the Stepping On program. We've held Stepping On classes here in Cambridge. We see, based on the research, a 30% reduction in Elder Falls as a result of those programs. We have a suicide prevention project called the Gun Shop Project. And there's actually a gun shop nearby here, if you look at the Gun Shop Project, where we have a gun shop that will store guns for people if they are experiencing a suicidal crisis. And our healthcare systems are actually referring people to these two gun shop owners in Dane County to store guns. And that's based on something called means reduction. So it's not a take away guns. It's really if somebody's having a crisis, we want to make the home and the environment as safe as possible. And that same philosophy works with the Med Drop program. So again, we encourage people to get rid of their medication if they don't need them anymore, if their prescriptions have changed, if they have somebody in the home who maybe shouldn't have access to the medications, or just to make sure that they're not available. Because 75% of new opiate users get the medication from people that they know with or without asking. So that's really an important diversion technique. And then we run the Alive at 25 program, which the municipal court judges refer young drivers who've had GDL violations or speeding tickets, that sort of thing, to the Alive at 25 courses that are taught by retired deputies. And then they learn basically how to avoid risky situations like texting and that sort of thing while they're driving. So I'll just, I want to point out too that, you know, because of the partnership, you guys have supported the Med Drop program and have been members of Safe Communities. And that's really how we are able to keep the doors open. We have a lot, we have grants, we have federal grants. And we get support from the county and from the state. But really, without the sort of commitment of time and funding from you all, we wouldn't exist. So I want to point out, you know, if you look under partnerships, we have the Village of Cambridge listed as one of our supporting members. And I just want to thank you for that and answer any questions.
I have no questions. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
So what do you think are the top items that you're concentrating on this year?
Well, one thing that we really are excited about, and it's an expanded partnership with law enforcement and EMS, is referring people to recovery coaches. So that's one of our programs. We started out, we were the first program in the country to connect people with recovery coaches in the emergency rooms. So if somebody came into the emergency room and had overdosed and was being treated, then the doctors and nurses would call us and we have a recovery coach on call. A recovery coach is someone who has lived experience. So they've used and are in long-term recovery. They have been in recovery for at least two years. And then they go through a 40-hour training on how to be a supportive peer. So it's not like, it's not exactly like AA, but it's similar in some ways. And so we have actually a 90% referral to treatment based on that program. So folks who've gotten to the emergency room and then, you know, get into a treatment intake. We also are working with pregnant women. Unfortunately, we're seeing more and more pregnant women that are addicted to opioids. They don't want to disclose. And so then the babies are born with neonatal abstinence syndrome. So we need to get these moms into treatment. And so we also work with pregnant women and with women who've also used when pregnant, now are in recovery and have been trained. And we're seeing really great results there. And then finally, we've got family coaches. So family members who've lost people or who have dealt with addiction in their families are helping families who are facing the same struggles to get them to find treatment for their families and just to provide the kind of support that families need when they're in complete chaos. You know, I mean, it's a terrible situation. So all these recovery coach programs have also expanded so that law enforcement now, the sheriff's office, and I know you guys are in contract with the sheriff's office, right? So this would apply for you. Madison Police got a federal grant that's called MARI, Madison Addiction Recovery Initiative, that's now expanded to the Dane County Sheriff's Office. So now, police officers, if they arrest someone for use, they can connect someone to this MARI program and to a recovery coach to get them in before they even get into the whole process of, you know, of the courts.
Nice. Nice. Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm just curious, this storage of firearms, how does this work? I mean, does somebody turn this in voluntarily and then they request it back from you?
Yes, they request it back from the gun shop. And so there's, if you're interested, I can send you a video. There was just a video on Discover Wisconsin that talks about the program. So, you know, the beautiful thing about this is that these are folks who really understand. And they're not, you know, it's not like a therapist. It's somebody who's saying, we'll take this gun for you. We'll clean it while you're having this rough time. And then they call them in 90 days and say, are you, how are you doing? Usually in consultation with their healthcare provider. Then they'll say, okay, it's, you know, if you're ready to take the gun back, you can take the gun back. And so the gun shop owners actually purchase safes to store the guns. They clean them. They return them. But there has to be, and they don't return them with any ammunition.
Do you get the ammunition when the gun is turned in, or you just get an empty casing?
Yeah, they encourage basically to turn everything in, turn in the...
So then you keep the, or the gun is kept along with the ammunition, and then everything is returned?
Not the ammunition.
Not the ammunition. Okay.
Yep.
So you keep that and just return the gun?
Right.
I just, I had never heard of that, so...
We're the only place in the country doing it.
Oh, well, explains that.
I think that's great. I mean, it's smart because oftentimes, I think you take away the opportunity, the convenience of it, and then if you make it inconvenient for them, then they have to think if there is a risk of suicide. If it's there in handy, it's just too easy. So I like that. That's great.
And actually, there's study after study that shows that that's the case.
Yep.
People weren't, people won't say, okay, well, somebody took my guns, so now I'm going to take pills.
No.
You know, and there have been studies where folks have, you know, jumped off or planned to jump off the Golden Gate Bridge. And all they had to do was cross the street because there were barrier on one side. All they had to do was cross to the other side of the road. But they said they didn't want to get hit by a car. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not a ra-
So they didn't want to do it.
It's not rational.
Folks are not rational at this moment. So you want to just give as much time, and this is the partnership with the healthcare systems that we have too, where each person is going in and having a safety plan. And the healthcare provider will say, how would you do it? What's your plan? Very specifically. It's counterintuitive because you think maybe I'm going to plant the idea. But if somebody's thinking about suicide, they've got it mapped out. There's nothing you're going to say, other than to say, I really, really care about you, and let's figure out a way to get you through this. That's what's effective. And then how do we get the means that they were going to use out of their reach?
Yep. How to make it, yep. Good.
Last question. Is there anything that the Village of Cambridge could be doing to help with this program so that we get a better return?
I think if you could help us get the word out about the gun shop program. And we have a program called Question Persuade Refer, which is, it's a training for everybody, anybody, about how do you recognize the signs and symptoms and somebody may be thinking about suicide. We really need everybody to know how to handle it. And we would be delighted to sponsor a class with you. Have, you know, just put it in the paper, you know, on cable access, announce it, and we would have a trainer come, no charge, and just make it open to the public.
Oh, that would be really great.
And then we could promote the gun shop project and maybe have the gun shop owner come and talk about it.
Are there times of the year when this is more applicable, or it doesn't make a difference?
You know, we tend to think that holidays are the worst, but sometimes spring, actually, this time of year is, has the highest rates of suicide because people have more energy. And sometimes people are more agitated, have more energy, they're more likely to act on it. So...
So what you're suggesting is that you would come back and give a...
Hour and a half training.
Okay.
It's a, it's a national, you know, evidence-based kind of training. It's really been researched and effective. And actually, the person who I would have do it is Jean Papalia. She's a retired police officer who also works for the state, looking at suicide data. And she's a very engaging presenter. So I would ask her to come and do this. And we'd be delighted to partner with you on it.
Maybe we should have staff look into that and scheduling something. And then reach out to different organizations to spread the word. I know PFLAG organization just started. I think it would be really good to get, to make sure that they're aware that we'd be sponsoring that event.
Yeah. And we could also do another event if you're interested, just on, you know, on stigma and drug use and how to help people find resources and treatment if they're dealing with substance use disorders. We could also, you know, have something, have excellent speaker about that topic too. Somebody who's in long-term recovery and is managing our programs. So...
Should we do both at the same time?
Absolutely. Would be, would love to.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time very much.
This was very beneficial. Thank you so much for sharing.
Okay, moving on. Another public appearance. We're looking for the Chamber of Commerce. An update.
Hi, I'm Karen Anderson, representing the Chamber of Commerce. I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with your money. So right now, I've got a list of five things in order of priority that we're doing with the money that the village has given to us with our collaboration. The first thing, and it's at the top of the list because we feel it's the most important, is getting printed material with information about the community. So we are talking to towns and associates to publish community guides. And the very first thing they're going to do for us is publish a one-page brochure. One side is a map, and the other side is a list of community events that will happen for this year. Then for the years of 2020 and 2021, they're going to print a 24-page glossy magazine just for the community. They're going to print it at cost. It will not cost the chamber or the village anything. They're going to, they're going to pay for it by ad sales. And it will be open to anyone, not just the chamber member or anybody within the village to advertise in it. One thing about the brochure and the community guide, and I talked a little bit with Lisa about this, is that we do not own a map of the village or the Cambridge area. So we have to pay a cartographer to make a map. So that'll be the first expenditure of our money's $633 to have a map prepared for us. Once that's done, the village and the chamber can use the map for any publication they want. We found out kind of the wrong way around that Google Maps are not public property. They're owned by Google. You cannot use them in your own publications, that sort of thing. So that'll be our first expense. And that's a one-time fee. So we'll have that forever. I did ask the publisher today what it would take, or what would happen if we need to have the map updated, how much that would cost. And they haven't gotten back to me about that. Thinking ahead to the connector bike trail for the connector to Glacial Drumland Trail, adding that to the map, or at least the trailhead, that sort of thing. So I know we'll have things in the future that we would want to update it with. But again, it's our map. The village and the chamber can use it for anything they want. The next expense will be printing 3,000 copies of the map and community calendar. Hopefully, that will be out in May. I'm hoping to talk to the cartographer and see a proof by next week. The price for the 3,000 copies of the map and calendar is $875. So we're talking about 1,508 dollars for our first major expense. I know that we talked a little bit about this before, but again, I want to stress that the Chamber of Commerce gets requests weekly for community information from other communities. So they contact us saying, hey, can you send us brochures, information, whatever? We don't have anything in print to hand them, except some handmade brochures that we've done ourselves. So they're not, you know, professional quality like these will be. So we're, you know, we're, there are other places asking for information about Cambridge itself. So that should be good. In the future for 2020 and 2021, I have a bid from towns and associates to provide 3,024-page magazines every, for both years. They will, they will do everything. The job of the chamber will be to provide photos, provide content, that sort of thing. And then towns and associates will sell the ads to cover their costs. They're asking for a two-year commitment for that. So I just said today, if I don't see a downside about that, if somebody does, let me know. The next thing that we're doing is promoting a community-wide garage sale, May 3rd and 4th. We will provide maps of the participants and that sort of thing to hand out at the Chamber of Commerce. And that'll be advertised on Facebook. The next event after that is a picture yourself in Cambridge photo contest. We did this last year in the buildup to the Parade of Homes, and it was very popular. So we're going to do it for the three weeks building up to and after the Memorial Day Parade and service. So it will generate a lot of pictures that we can use on websites and on Facebook pages and that sort of stuff. There will be a $25 Chamber Bucks Award at the end of each of the three weeks for the picture that's voted the most popular for that week. And then the last thing we're working on is the Welcome to Cambridge signage. It was not a clean transfer of power, so to say, when I took over as president. So we are playing catch-up on the signage information. And so far, we've tracked down just about everything we need to. So we're, excuse me, we're checking up on the final designs, where the, where the design left off last year and the DOT permissions for the signage placements. So just so you guys know where money is going and where time is being spent for things that are visible for the whole village. That's pretty much it for right now. You guys have any questions for me?
Not really questions. I think the map of the Village of Cambridge is fantastic. I think that's a really great use of the village funds to be able to have that available. Are we getting that in a PDF format or some sort of format that if we need to use it for, if someone came to the village and wanted to do something else and wanted to have that map, we could make that available to them?
I know it will be digitally available to us, meaning us, the chamber, and the village. I don't know that you want to hand out, you know, like PDF copies of it. Probably only want to give them printed copies. Because again, the village owns it. There will be a marker on the map saying property of the Village of Cambridge.
Right, right. But if someone came to us, someone else who had an event and they wanted to include a map of the village for their event, I could see us saying, we have a map available. Here it is in digital form.
Mm-hmm.
And give them permission to use that. So I think that would be really beneficial for us.
A clarification, Karen and I had talked a little bit. Town and Country has done maps for us and so forth. This will be a little beyond the village limits.
Yeah, it'll be the Cambridge area. So we're hoping to include at least Lake Ripley Park and part of the lake in the map so that it'll be a broader section than the map that Lisa currently has from Dane County. That's why I wanted to know about our ability to update it, how much it would cost to update it. Is it going to be $600 every time, or is there just a fee to update what's already there? So I don't know that yet. They haven't gotten back to me about it. But I will let you know when I find out.
You mentioned the parade that's coming up and the rhetoric ceremony. Have you talked to other stores about possibly being open that day? There are a lot of people that come into town.
We talked about it at the last board meeting, encouraging members to be open between like 8:30 and 9:30, or 8:30 and 10:00, or what, something like that. Like sometime between the breakfast and the start of the parade because there'll be people milling around downtown. So we are, we'll push that information out. We haven't really pushed it yet, but we will do that.
Okay. And we don't expect any maps, anything before that parade?
It would be nice. I'm not sure. It depends on the cartographer. So when I get the list of questions that I sent them today answered, I'll know more.
And then I did, the brochures. So is it a two-year brochure? So we'd be expecting to use it for two years?
No.
No, each year we'll get a...
Each year is a new brochure.
And at, and what's the estimated timeframe on when we would get a brochure? Is that a first quarter?
I have it in their proposal. What they want is, they want all the information ready to go in the beginning of September. So September 9th of this year, they want every, all the content ready for the 2020 guide. And then we would get the 2020 guides at the beginning of May in 2020. So they have that, how, five months or whatever it is to put everything together. And then the same thing for 2021. They'll collect all the information. We have to have it to them in September of 2020, and they will print the guide at the beginning of 2021. So this way, one of the things that happened with the previous guide was that it was meant to last for a long time. And pretty much as soon as that was handed out, it was obsolete. There were people that were out of business or had moved or things like that. So this will give us the ability to update it and have it more fresh yearly. Plus, we can put our yearly calendar of events in it every year instead of having just a stagnant thing that sits.
And so we'll be reaching out to like Barctoberfest and Fire Fest and...
Yes.
All those things to make sure that their dates for those years would be included in those calendars?
Yeah. So we're already working on that for the map, just the map and community event calendar that will come out this year. We have the Jefferson County Tourism Guide. You know, we've gone through that and picked out all the important events. And then we're going to contact the, like the Arts Council to make sure that we have all the dates for the Friday music events and that sort of thing. So we'll go through all of it before we hand it to the printer. And then when we get the proof, we'll have somebody else look at it.
And then the guide will include both chamber and non-chamber businesses and a good mix of both of those? And each year, maybe feature a different businesses, I'm assuming?
I'm not sure how they're going to do the content. What they really focus on is more like what there is to do, what there is to see, what there is to eat, where there is to, you know, hang out. So the, you know, like the bike trail, the park, the beach, that sort of thing. I don't know if it's going to feature businesses.
The Fire Fest sculpture tour?
Yeah. We can definitely do that.
The walking tour for the Fire Fest sculptures?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Okay.
Karen, one last question.
Sure.
Is there anything that the chamber would like to see from the village regarding this collaboration that, you know, we're talking about here today?
Not so far.
Okay.
As long as, you know, you guys are happy with the information you're getting. And, you know, you guys are welcome to join our meetings anytime you want to. Is it best that I, you know, do you want me to come every month and talk to you guys? Or how, you know, how often would you like to see me here?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, I think.
Okay.
I think that was our expectation, was quarterly.
Right.
And we did, and we missed first quarter.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. We've got the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the village board minutes, the water and sewer.
Just make sure nobody else wants to speak.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Anybody else would like to speak in the, in the public appearance section of the meeting? Okay, moving on. The consent agenda, which includes the minutes to the last village board meeting, Water and Sewer Committee, and operator's license.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
All right. Okay, any discussion?
On the appointments, it says appointed positions, advisory only.
We're going to get to that later.
Well, this is a question, not...
Oh.
A backup question.
Okay.
No regulatory or managerial authority. Okay, the Plan Commission falls under that. Now, when they had their meeting, was that a legal vote that they had on the TIPS?
State statutes outline the process for the TIPS. And the first thing in that process is a recommendation has to be made from Plan Commission to the village board to move forward. So that's up by state statute.
But it says that they have no... They have no regulatory or advisory only. Shouldn't the Plan Commission be up in the committees of the village board? Shouldn't the Plan Commission be up in the committees of the Village Board?
So, is it just categorized incorrectly in the document? Is the question, I think.
In -- yeah, I'm just looking at this on the--
Not that I want, though. Won't change, but--
Oh, okay. Yep, what you're seeing, Sue, is the appointed positions advisory only is just the village forester on the bottom of page two. Page three is the -- yep, the next page, number three, is citizen boards that are made up of citizenry as well as trustees. So, that advisory is just the village forester.
Gotcha. Good. Okay, sorry.
Good clarification.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Looks like we're okay on that. Okay, moving on. Reports, President's report. I know that we have two folks here tonight, and there's been a little question about the committees, and it's tying back in with the trustees. So, we are going to be meeting in closed session with two applicants regarding their interest in serving on the Board of Trustees. And then, once that has been made, we will be sending out to that person as well as anybody who has not already submitted their interest in which committees they would like to serve on. Two of the folks here have already done that.
I can receive one more.
Okay. All right. So, that's the extent of the President's committee report. Library Board?
I was ill for the Library Board meeting, Patty. Do you want to come up and give it to the microphone so people can hear what you say? If you want to give a little report on what was covered? Thank you, Patty.
We met on the 10th of April, and it was a short board meeting, less than an hour. And I know you -- yeah. We discussed the foundation grant and where that was proceeding. We discussed the report that Joan filed for the Library, the annual report. I think that's about all. We just had a very short meeting, short agenda and short meeting.
All right. Thank you, Patty.
All right. Village Office Updates. Lisa, what can you tell us?
I do have on the agenda, we did include for you a budget comparison. We're still working on the audit, but this was to give you a snapshot of where we are this year in the general fund. I have been working with Mary Bailey and Tom Tabest on the park grant. We did run it by Mary. She had a couple of questions. We are sending a letter up to the county asking for clarification on a couple of items. So, once we get that back, it will be coming before the Board for final approval. The remodel has begun, so there's been some stuff going on with that. We will be having a contractors' meeting on Thursday to see where we're at, how things are progressing. Being the short timelines, they're picking out samples of stuff are starting to come in. We did meet with the auditor last week. The bank and the cash are reconciled as of December 31st. We're making progress on the worksheets. We'll be having another conversation with him Thursday to see where we're at on those. I did meet today with MSA and the DNR regarding the Melster site. I'll be preparing a memo kind of summarizing where we're at on that. The county is willing to work with us. First steps, we'll be doing some test kits to see what is where. Can't really decide where we're going until we have confirmation of what we're dealing Working on closing out the election, all the state paperwork on that, starting the special assessments for Spring Street. Those should be going out shortly. And calculating the vineyard's first payment based on the tax settlement in February. So, on top of the everyday stuff, that's been taking up our time.
All right, any questions? Lisa, I've got two. One, the building upstairs, I know you're going to have a meeting tomorrow with Joe -- is it Joe Daniels, the contractor?
Thursday.
Thursday. Is there any -- have you been getting any unforeseen surprises?
Nope. It's been pretty clean.
Okay. And then, moving on, the Melster site meeting. How did that go with the state of Wisconsin? Were they cooperative? Are they--
Yep, very cooperative. It's a unique situation for them as well as us. So, you know, in discussing it, it's hard to look at our options and so forth until we actually do some tests to see what we're dealing with. You know, what is where? So, we talked about putting in overlay of where the building had been with what's there now, doing a grid around, looking at the previous test sites that were done previous to Home Again being built. Check those same sites, do a grid around where the building is to see if things are just where the building was, or if there's anything outside. So, once that's done, they'll have more answers as we'll leave.
Did you make a call yet as far as outside legal on this?
We did get a couple names, so I have not talked to them yet. We will as we start moving forward. We didn't need them in at this initial level.
I have a question or just a comment on budget. So, I see a lot of people did their dog licenses, more than we expected, but I find it really hard to believe we only have seven cats in town. I have two of them, so--
There half of them are. We have licensed over 20 cats. If they go in the system, it may just go under licensing.
Okay.
But yes, there's only been 20 some cats licensed, so, yeah.
And we've got three of them between the two of us right here. So, I would just want to encourage people to make sure you're licensing your cats, please.
What about the enforcement of two dogs per household? Because there's households in Cambridge that have more than two dogs. And/or, let's say, on the same site, a lot of chickens?
The chickens, our ordinances do say two per person. I don't know that that was the original intent of the Board when that was created, but it does say two per person. So, if somebody has 10 people in their house--
Well, I don't think there is 10 people in their house.
But if people call and complain, the police can look into it. We're not out looking.
Well, that and the dogs.
Yeah. So, if we receive complaints, the police will check them out.
All right.
Are ducks licensed?
Chickens aren't licensed, either.
Well, I mean, I mean--
Are regulated. There is fowl--
Probably the same as duck, I mean chickens.
I don't -- it may be different, but yeah.
Same people have ducks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Let's go to bills. We have a couple of different amounts in there, but I had a question. With the one to Detroit salt, it was the timing. That bill was paid in April, but I'm assuming that we have a lot of that salt left.
He did just get a final load of salt to fill our contract, so the salt shed is pretty much full now.
Okay.
How about I make a motion first?
Yeah.
Before discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $67,564.13.
One second. All right. All right, now, I will go back into the bill here for the Detroit salt. So, that's okay? That's a spring bill, and we'll have plenty of salt for carryover.
Right now, we're -- the shed is full. So, we have the contract we have to fill in that. We did work where we ordered a lot last year to help with the budget. We had one more load to do for the contract now.
So, that's a curious threshold.
So, the one more load that we need to do with that is -- does the contract go through 2019, so we'll get that in the winter?
No, this was the last load we had to take. There are reserves if we need more, but--
All right. Any other questions on bills before we have a individual count? Okay, can we -- a roll call on this?
Trustee Cunningham?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Cumbier?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, bills are paid then. Okay, unfinished business. Anything to -- nothing? Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Let's talk about the 2019-2020 committee assignments.
I do have memo in there because we still do have an open seat. We will wait until the next meeting to finalize the committee assignments. So, if you have not filled out the forms I sent in, please get those to me so President McNally can take a look and see where people would like to serve.
Okay, all right. Cambridge Foundation Grant?
Do we have to make a motion to postpone that, the organizational meeting? Because our ordinance--
Our ordinance do say, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to postpone the organizational meeting and committee assignments until May 14th.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of postponing the meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Taking care of that. Thank you, Paula. All right. Okay, Foundation Grant?
Foundation Grant, I did put in the packet. The foundation did provide us with $50,000 to use as we see fit among what we applied for. So, we had asked for three things, the Amundsen Center, a lean-to shed, and the tables and chairs for this room. So, it will be up to the Board to determine how that $50,000 is divvied, if we do want to go ahead with the lean-to, the rest to the Amundsen Center, or put it all to the remodel. We can hold off on the tables and chairs and, you know, get those as needed, but--
I'll make a motion that the Cambridge Foundation dollars is split between the lean-to and the remodel, with the lean-to taking precedence for those dollars, and whatever remains will go towards the remodel.
I'll second that. $10,000 for the lean-to, $40 for the rest for the--
Well, the estimate was 10-8, but I stated it the way I did. In case it comes in a little higher than 10-8, then I would think the money goes to that. That's why I stated it as such.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So, sorry. Do we have any dollars elsewhere if we want? Because I know we don't have quite enough tables. So, do we have dollars elsewhere?
No. Couple things. The quilters that used to meet over at Dr. Gay's building are meeting here now. They did bring in some of the portable white tables they had over there. They've donated to us. We have picked up a couple more of the white tables. We've also used the fronts of the libraries as needed, too. When we order the furniture for upstairs, if there's additional funds left in that pool, we could always pick up a couple extra tables and so forth. We do have about 150 chairs, so the chairs, I'm not as worried about as the tables.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of that, please signify.
It's due roll call.
All right, okay.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Cumbier?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. On the same agenda item, the Foundation Grant, do we want to send them a thank-you letter?
Yeah.
Yeah. And can you -- everybody signs that then at the next meeting?
Yep. And I will just add, I did include in here for the fire department, they did give some funds for the fire department. They had some set aside. They added $27,000 more, so $81,000 went toward the purchase of the fire truck--
Super.
-- which should hopefully help bring down the lease amount, so that will benefit us as well.
Okay, all right. Moving on, Item C, the 1901 quote for the HVAC for the Amundsen Center remodeling.
Again, I put a memo in the packet back when we had the mold issues in the center. It was H&amp;H at the time, it's now 1901. Came in, did three-quarters of the building. At that time, the Board did opt to wait to finish the HVAC in the old library space until we remodeled. So, this quote, we'll finish up the project. It will put hot water pipes to everything, so we'll be able to now regulate the different rooms. We won't be working on the zones that we've been working on, which has been real challenging with the remodel going on. They'll have all the windows and stuff open, so the heat will kick in and, you know, so we'll be able to get rid of the zones. It will be a complete, much more efficient system once it's all tied together. And I apologize, this didn't come to us when we had the bids. We've had this for -- since last year. I didn't even realize it hadn't come before the Board for approval. We've had it since last October, and so--
Have you gone back to them and verified that this dollar amount is--
Yes.
They're still honor this dollar amount?
Yep.
I was going to say, because it's six months old, so that's great. That's great.
Things have changed.
Do we need to approve this then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Their bid? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1901 quote for the HVAC for the Amundsen Center in the amount of $57,200.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All right, it is a financial issue, so we'll have to go with a roll call.
Trustee Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Cumbier?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right. Anything else on the building here? I noticed that we're going to go into closed session. Is there anything that we can wrap up while we still--
Yep, we can go through the meeting announcements and so forth first before.
All right. We have a joint meeting with the Town of Oakland tomorrow evening. That's at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM at the Town Hall.
Because that's been -- it was 6:00 or I thought, or everyone--
It's been 7:00 since it was, yeah.
Do we have an agenda for that?
Yes.
It came when this one--
Oh, yeah, you're right. It did. I'm sorry. You're right. There was a pact.
All right. So, a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock with Town of Oakland. We have a Library Board meeting on May 8th, Plan Commission, May 13th, another Village Board meeting on May 14th, and Water and Sewer on May 21st.
And there is also a joint police meeting on the 14th. I didn't have that on here. So, that will still be the current members until the new ones are appointed.
Questions, referrals to staff of future agenda items? Approval of Park and Ride Bicycle Trail Grant? Approval of park and ride bicycle trail grant?
Yep, once we receive the answers, we're posing to the county.
Okay.
Back on the agenda.
What was the feedback from my lawyer?
She had a couple questions. She was under the assumption too that the village would be tied to completing the project. Tom Tabest did also talk to the county. She said, yes, the expectations are that the project is going to be completed as in the grant. So we had some questions on, in kind, how that goes toward the, the costs, when it has to be signed by, if engineering costs and so forth that we've already incurred can be put toward. So a number of questions like that, we're posing to them.
We already approved that.
No, we did not.
Yes, we did. Trustee McNally made a motion to approve the park ride bicycle grant pending approval of Mary Bailey.
And Mary did not approve it yet, so.
Right, but it doesn't have to come back to the Board because we already approved it.
Pending the approval.
Pending approval of Mary.
But we already approved it, so as soon as she says yes, if she doesn't approve it, it would come back to the Board. But if she approves it, there's no more action we need to take on it because we already approved it. Otherwise, why did we do that motion?
That's true.
Well, we'll get more information on this and bring it back. That's a fairly substantial item, so just for clarification.
But we already approved it.
Okay.
Right, but I'd like to hear what Mary has to say.
No, that's great, yes, I hear, hearing what Mary has to say, but it's not like.
Why wouldn't we want to hear what she has to say?
That's not what I'm saying. It doesn't have to come back to us for approval because we already approved it.
But if, if there is some sticking points in there.
We will bring back Mary's concerns and questions, so.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Discuss it, understand it, absolutely, but there's no approval that needs to be done. If, if Mary approved it, then we're okay.
But with a question in lies, if she doesn't?
Yeah.
I would like.
She wasn't arguing. I wasn't arguing that.
All right.
That's not what I was arguing.
Were we arguing though?
I, I was saying it's already been approved. That if Mary approves it, it's done, it doesn't come back.
Okay.
Well, wait, let's just see what Mary has to say on this. Okay. One other item, in the materials here, CART, are they still interested, you know?
They have never contacted the office, asking. I've never had any conversations with them, so.
Because I don't know when we'll have a completion date, but if.
We're looking July.
All right.
But, yeah, that discussion has never come through the office.
Does it make sense to maybe give them a call to see if they're still interested?
We can. I'd like the discussion too. I don't know that they would need that whole area. I think it would be wise for us, especially as we're transitioning and everything, to at least keep the office I'm in for storage and so forth. But, yeah, we can.
All right. Okay.
Especially on that CART situation that, we, I guess if you do reach out, then we have to know what their expectations are too because we don't necessarily want them to think that, you know, our, our staff folks are going to be utilized to hold down the fort while they're doing interviews and everything. I don't want that expectation to be there, so.
Okay. Now we go back to convening.